Okay, this meeting of the Ontario Board of Education is now called to order. We have a tobacco policy in place, there is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? District Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Sherry?
Present.
Trustee Bishop?
Present.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Wallace?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Present.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here, thank you.
Trustee Taylor?
Trustee Taylor?
Here.
Sorry, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed litigation. May I have a first please? Trustee Bishop, second trusty story. Comments, questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, we should be back in about forty-five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to exit the executive session, return to public session. May I have a first please? Trustee Wallace second, trustee Taylor. Comments or questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. The Bennett Elementary School principal, Mr. Bono, is here today to speak to us and welcome the board.
Good evening, trustee Sherry and the Board of Education. Welcome to Bennett Elementary. I hope you have had a wonderful start to the school year. We certainly have here at Bennett. I have to say, there's been a tremendous amount of enthusiasm from the teachers, from the students, and even the parents. And I think more notably for me, from my perspective, the parents. At open house, at the past picnic the PTA had, it's just, people are just so excited to be back, to be back in session, and it's contagious. And, you know, being the old man that I am, and I've been here for a long time, I'm excited. I'm excited to be standing here. So, welcome. Good evening. I was gonna give you a couple of thoughts that I have and share with you that I think you may be interested in. Ms. Amadeo, our school librarian, has decided to become our student government advisor, and she's gonna lead the sixth grade through elections and then start partnering with the PTA, with PTA activities. Last year's group decided that we're going to eliminate the fiduciary aspects of our student government and partner with the PTA. This does twofold. A, it eliminates a lot of the red tape and working with Ms. Leclerc because Ms. Leclerc is so tough to work for. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. But no, it does also create more of a partnership with the student I'm teasing, I'm teasing. But no, it does also create more of a partnership with the student government and the PTA, and that's what we're looking for. And it does make the finances and the flow of money a lot easier with the PTA than dealing with the school district. The PTA is comprised of a whole new board, and they too bring a new slate of enthusiasm. They have a lot of fresh ideas, and one of them is to have classroom parents and increase that communication. They had met with Superintendent McLaren on this idea first, and then Jenny, Jared, our PTA president, presented it to me, and I was elated with the idea. It helps bring parents into our schools a little bit more. And I think if there's an area where we could grow in Bennett Elementary, that would certainly be the case. The PTA actually had, despite Mother Nature, had a very successful picnic, and it turned out to be more of a playdate. And they planned it simultaneously with homecoming this past Friday night. And it was really nice to see the parents actually go back and forth between the two events of the girls' soccer game, all the food that was being hosted by the Booster Club. It was just, it was a great communal event. It was a great feel. And the weather wasn't that bad, but it wasn't, it could have been better. The PTA is actually planning a Halloween festival, and we're back. But it's not gonna be the Halloween dance that we've had in the past few years. They're gonna turn it more into a carnival. We really need a lot of hands in helping because what we want to do, we have some, they have some great ideas. They wanna actually have a haunted hike, and we're gonna need a lot of volunteers to make the hike haunted. So if anybody has any plans on October 28th, Friday, October 28th, by all means. Trustee Story, you don't have to dress up at all, just come as you are. It's perfect.
I would love to be here. I've always had fun at these things. However, I'll be in NISBA up in Syracuse for New York State School Boards Convention along with Superintendent McLaren, trustee Bishop, and trustee Taylor.
Well then, I'll be safe from any pies being thrown in my face.
Yes, you will be safe from whipped cream pie.
I'll be here. I'll take trustee Story's place.
Perfect.
I deserve that. Let's see. From the teacher's perspective, the academic side, the teachers are getting to know your students. They're actually doing their own assessments that we use to try to increase the student learning. That's kind of boring. What we started last year was a school-wide field trip. And this past September 16th, that Friday, I think it was the second Friday of school, the entire school went out. The sixth grade went up to the mountain arboretum in Tannersville. Fifth grade went to the Catskill Center, and then also to the Quarry Trail hike. And I'm always amazed, because I usually partner with the fifth grade, of how many people don't know that there's a fire tower right there on 28. It's actually hidden right behind those pine trees. And how many students have never seen the reservoir? So, we love that trip. And then the fourth grade goes to Wilson State Park. And it really does a great job of setting the social setting, getting the kids at an earlier onset out to interact with their teachers and just appreciate what we have here in the community. And it's just, we're two for two. Mother Nature's cooperated. It's been phenomenal. And the last bullet item that I have to share with you is our after-school activities are gonna be starting this coming Monday. And we have board games, coding clubs, book clubs, robotics, gardening, the garden. I don't know if you've had a chance to walk through the garden. By all means, you'll see a lot of student artwork and a lot of work that's been done by Ms. Mayone and a lot of other teachers and volunteers to make that place much better. There's also typing. We offer Rosetta Stone for French and Spanish. There's a drama club, which is actually gonna be partnering with the PTA. I think they're gonna have Macbeth's witches out giving the guided tours. And then there's PE, Mr. Boyer's band ensembles, and a couple of other activities that I just didn't mention. I didn't want to bore you. I see trustee Sherry starting to fall asleep, so I don't want to bore you. With that, do you have any questions for me? Have a lovely meeting.
Thank you so much, Principal Bono. We love coming to Bennett. You've got a great school here. Okay, thank you to Principal Bono for welcoming us so grandly to Bennett Elementary School. We love being here. Moving on to item four, the acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of September 13th, 2022. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Armando. Questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. And we are very pleased to welcome back Noel Crandell as our student representative from the high school. And Ms. Crandell, if you wouldn't mind giving us a report.
Hello, I'd like to, oh, is this, yeah, I think so. No? Hello? Okay. I'd like to start with, "It's a pleasure to be back, and I look forward to working with each of you." Recently in student government, we have been unable to meet due to some conflicting schedule issues. However, hope to have a remedy for that in the coming days. We plan to finally complete projects such as our outside initiative, as well as begin working on new things. Throughout the high school, clubs are beginning to meet weekly, such as chess club, high school art club, GSA, yearbook, both of our language clubs, and fall sports. Homecoming and Spirit Week were a great success. To the delicious food going towards great causes, attending the games and the dance, lots of fun was had by all at the various festivities. It seems as though the students are happy to return back to a school year that feels somewhat normal. However, I have noticed that there's a lot of confusion surrounding, kind of separate to normal school year, but I've noticed that there's a lot of confusion surrounding school social media accounts, specifically ones led by students for clubs, sports, or grade levels. I was curious if there is protocols or parameters in place in regards to the situation, and if so, what are they?
So Noel, what I hear you saying is that there are social media accounts that are led by the district itself, but that you're also seeing social media accounts that are led by students? Is that correct? Victoria, do you wanna?
So, actually, this had come up a couple of years ago, and then I think in COVID, it got lost in the shuffle, but it's come back to my attention just last week that there are currently, to my knowledge, two social media Facebook accounts that are not district-run but are run under the name of Antura. That is difficult for the district, and we need to work with those clubs to potentially change that because they cannot run under our name and represent us if we have no control over the content. So, that did come to my attention last week, possibly on Friday. But that's something that we're definitely looking into. So I don't know what the club's feeling is from the student perspective, but from the district perspective, that's really the issue, is that they are representing the district, using the district name, taking pictures of students and posting them. And all of that can be problematic if you don't have the right authority to do those things. And if you're expressing opinions, that may be controversial, and they are not the district's position. That's also a very difficult position to be in.
Is, sorry, is there a way in which they could run if it's like under an administrator or like, under like a teacher or like the advisor of the club?
I don't believe that that's something that the advisors of the club have the background knowledge to undertake.
Okay, thank you.
Noel, I just want to be clear. What it sounds like you're asking for is for some kind of a student-led social media initiative, similar to what, like what they do in Sagerties, something like that. So, what Victoria's, what Superintendent McLaren is saying is that that to do that in an official way, that it has to be run by the district. Maybe there's a way that you could come together and meet with Principal Edelman to discuss whether there could be student input or things that could be a collaboration between the high school students and student government in particular, and maybe the heads of each of the clubs with one person on the ground as like a social media student-led coordinator, something like that we could discuss potentially?
We could certainly look at if there's an existing model in another district that there is, like, that there's one point person. I think what we can't support is having every club have their own social media presence and every team and every organization because then we really have no way to manage it. Okay.
Noel, is that something that you would be comfortable taking the lead on, setting up some time to maybe speak with Mr., would it be Mr. Edelman that she would start with? Yeah, to set up a meeting with Mr. Edelman and start talking about this a little bit?
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Anything else from you?
I think that's all for now because we haven't been able to meet, but I'm hoping by next time there'll be more. Thank you.
Does anybody have questions for Ms. Crandell? Thank you for coming tonight, Noel. It's really good to have you back. And then item six, the superintendent district news. The superintendent will report district news.
Good evening. So, we received some good news over the weekend. We were contacted by Cynthia Nicotin informing us that the Nature Conservancy wants to contribute financial resources to help advance the community vision for vacant post-buyout parcels in Boysville. They were really inspired by the youth-led visioning work that happened within the community, and they want to keep the ball rolling in activating these sites for community and ecological use. They're interested in hearing some ideas for what could be done to activate these lots and want, they really want to ensure that community voice is heard in the process, and specifically want to ensure to include student input. And I think it's really lovely that they see that they want our students to be included in this process as it will affect their community, and possibly, I view it as an opportunity to help retain these students as community members once they graduate because they will have had the opportunity to help shape the community's future. Homecoming was wonderful this weekend. Thank you to everyone who was involved. I know there are many more people to thank than I would or can possibly list, but certainly the high school administration, the buildings and ground staff, our interim director of health, PE, and athletics, Leah Smith, who is the secretarial support to our interim health, PE, and athletics director. The Booster Club, I know, was very integral in the success of the day. Coaches and athletes, all of the clubs that had booths, and certainly the students' families and community members who came out to participate. It really was a great day. I particularly enjoyed the fried dough with Nutella, and my son immediately took ownership of the bucket hat that I bought from the Booster Club. And I'm also told that the homecoming dance was very successful and was attended by about 190 students, which is a massive percentage of our high school. I just wanted to note that although we are all moving forward and we are no longer tracking and reporting on COVID, it is certainly still something that we continue to deal with in the buildings. I just wanted to remind everybody that the Department of Health has provided guidance that families that have a positive test at home should be reporting to the Ulster County Department of Health themselves. The schools are not reporting these cases. I'm assuming that if the Department of Health is recommending that families report, then if the schools also were to report, that would lead to duplication. But I would also like to note that even if your child does not have COVID, if they are sick, please keep them home, even if it's just a cold. It seems that kids are coming down with colds now that we're no longer masking, and it's more important than ever to keep them home and allow them to recover without spreading illness further. Just as a brief update on the ASTRA program, we are still looking forward to offering this for our families, but ASTRA has not yet been able to hire for our district. They have gotten as far as interviewing and offering the position to an individual who then declined. But as of last week, in their status update, they noted that they have recently received several applications and will move through the process again. So they will keep us in the loop. We have an upcoming learning opportunity for parents. There will be a joint presentation by our staff and the Resource Center for Accessible Living, also known as RCal, on understanding the difference between an individualized education plan or an IAP and a Section 504 plan. Presentation will be on October 3rd and will be virtual. I believe it was posted on Facebook today, and there is a link. So, I was unable to attend the Bennett Open House, but as Mr. Bono reports, it was well-attended and positive. I was able to attend the open house at the middle high school, and it was also well-attended. And as he noted, I think the parents were really happy to be back in the buildings and able to meet with faculty face-to-face. And Woodstock and Fenicia both have their open houses this week. Just a note, please keep in mind, October is for scheduling. We are closed on October 5th, which is Wednesday of next week, also the following Monday, October 10th. And then October 19th is a superintendent's conference day, so no students will be in on that day either. And just a couple noteworthy items on our agenda. We are appointing a new director of health, PE, and athletics. Beth Fletcher comes to us from Newburgh. She's been an educator for 16 years, and she very much impressed our hiring committee and assistant superintendent Laffin and me. We are very excited to welcome to Antura. We will be working with our interim director to establish a mentoring arrangement so that Ms. Fletcher has all the support she needs as she joins our team. During the interview process, she spent a couple of hours with Ms. Simmons getting to know the facility and the district, and she also came up on homecoming on Saturday to join us. And we are also on this agenda modifying the titles of the administrators in our PPS department. Amanda Allison will be our assistant superintendent for PPS, and Carol Grema will be the director of special education. This title change is really more of a reclassification, and it aligns with the job responsibilities that exist currently for each of those roles. And keeping with these title changes, the organizational chart is also on the agenda for being updated. I think that's all I have. Any questions? There's kind of a lot of topics, sorry.
No, that's, thank you very much, Superintendent McLaren. Does anyone else have questions for Superintendent McLaren? Superintendent, I wondered if you could just quickly go over again, I missed a little bit of what you said about the Boysville project. Are those land, is that land that the Conservancy already owns, or is that land that they're willing to purchase, or?
What they're talking about is talking, is really coming up with vision for the parcels that are already post-buyout. I don't know what, I don't know all the details of what happened last year with the buyouts and who owns them now, but this is the Nature Conservancy who has gotten funding to help with, kind of visioning for what the future of these parcels could look like.
Right, because last year we were pretty deep into a project that involved a number of the high school students designing parks and land use for, I think there were three plots in Boysville, right? Ms. Laffin?
Yes, this is a continuation of that work. Separately, that organization filed for support through the Nature Conservancy, and they were recently awarded that. So it's an opportunity to expand that with some funding, working with the Nature Conservancy as well. So it is a continuation of the same work, and we're really hoping we can expand opportunities for our students to get involved in other ways as they, and help them drive how the project moves forward. The Nature Conservancy was very impressed by our student engagement in this last year, and I'm told that's one of the reasons that they awarded us the grant.
That's terrific, yeah. The work that was being done last year was phenomenal, and it would be great to see it expanded. The kids were incredibly engaged and really did an excellent job, you know, doing that work. And I think that it's really important for Boysville, and because this is our main campus community, I think that anything that we can do to support revitalization and the use of the Boysville property that is no longer commercial would really be a boon for the town of Olive. And I'd love to support that in any way that we can. Anybody else questions for Superintendent McLaren? No? Okay. So, item 7.01, does anyone have district news, board district news? Trustee Story?
I attended homecoming this weekend, Friday at the tailgating afternoon, and then all day Saturday, and it was great to be back in person. all day Saturday, and it was great to be back in person and get to see everybody, and a lot of fun had by a while. This Sunday, at, from 8:00 to 12:00 at the Boyceville, and the football team will be doing a pancake breakfast. So, come out and support the football teams.
How did I miss you? I was at, I had the pleasure of attending some homecoming festivities and not eating fried dough, but I did get some delicious cookies, and it was incredible to see everybody out. And the Booster Club just did a phenomenal job. And the volleyball team raised like $700. Like, the kids were just incredible. They really worked hard to do the cooking and show up on time, and it was great to see all the parents and all of the kids out there really working so hard. Does anybody else? Sarah?
Yeah, just actually, to complement the Nature Conservancy update, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Olive Town, Town of Olive is doing a comprehensive plan for Boyceville and is seeking people's input. So, I'd love for the community to get involved in that. It's on their website, and there is a town hall meeting scheduled for November 17th at the Bo Stock Road Town Hall, but hoping that, to your earlier point, that this community and the school community can be heard, and voices can be heard, including students in that survey.
I wonder if we should consider sending a representative to that meeting because we are a very large employer in the Town of Olive, and I don't think it would be bad for us to be there. And here are some of the thoughts that Town of Olive residents have about the comprehensive survey. I know that when Woodstock did theirs, it was really impactful. I'd love to hear what Olive gets from that. Trustee Story?
I think it's important to be a reminder that you have to be a Town of Olive resident to do these surveys or participate. So, that's something that's important to know. It's, even though it's in Antora District, it doesn't have anything to do with our Antora District itself. It's the Town of Olive that's doing these things.
Right. Well, nobody can complete the survey if they're not a resident of the Town of Olive, but I don't think it would be, really, they're allowing non-residents.
Yeah, at the end of the survey, you have to list your affiliation with the Town of Olive. You can say you're not a resident. You can say you're a part-timer. You can say you've visited. You can say you drive through. You can say anything that is relevant to you, but they'd like everybody's ideas.
Because I thought I was told that it was only for, it was also posted, it was for two reply, or it was only open to Town of Olive residents, not the general public. So, that's why.
Could you send it to all of us, please? Thank you.
I wanted to let everyone know that I had the pleasure of running into Kay Golbeck the other day. For those who don't know, Kay runs the Antora Mentor Program, and I think we're very lucky that she agreed to come back this year and restart the program after two kind of COVID years where she couldn't really run the program in the way that it had always been done. And my daughter, who graduated in 2018, was very fortunate to have been involved and to have a mentor in the community, and she got to complete the suicide hotline training at Family of Woodstock and had a really incredible experience that certainly benefited her for her college experience and for her college applications. And applications are due by October 7th. Ms. Golbeck had said that, you know, she'd love to get some sophomores and juniors involved. It might be a little bit harder for seniors to get involved because it is a fairly large time commitment. And I believe, Ms. Laffin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you get half a credit for completing the mentorship program as a, is it like a half credit for, I think it falls under like extras, extracurriculum, like an, yeah, I think it's something like that. But I do know that she said that they do get a half a credit. And I think it's terrific that, and it's something really special that Antora offers, and we have so much talent in this community and so many amazing professionals in this community that taking advantage of it, I think is terrific for our high school kids. And I think everybody should spread the word. And I think there's information about it in the guidance office for sure.
There definitely is, and I just wanted to say, not only is there a lot of talent in this community, but there are incredibly generous and gracious people who do these mentors for a very nominal stipend, and many of them waive the stipend entirely, and really just take the time and make an incredible investment in our students.
I mean, every student that I've met that's had this experience has just incredibly benefited from it, and I think the mentors benefit as well for the opportunity. But truly, it's a gift that they give the community, and I'd love to see everybody take advantage of it as many of the students who can, and I want to make sure that parents know about it as well. Anybody else with board district news? Okay, item 8.01, the board will acknowledge public beheard comments from the last meeting. David Ekroth spoke, and I know that Assistant Superintendent Leclerc did follow up and meet with Mr. Ekroth, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Item 9.01, public beheard. Public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during public beheard. Please know that we hear you and take all of your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public beheard. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Be civil. Do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. And we do have someone signed up. Mr. Brownell, would you like to join us?
How are you? You doing well? Okay, so I start over, right? Neil Brownell, the crazy inventor. I gave a few speeches last year on things that I call con games, and I wanted to come back tonight and tell you why I was doing that. This story has everything to do with our kids. A while back, I attended a business meeting where I knew going in that I was going to be dealing with a bunch of con artists. Well, I study con games, so I thought it would be a lot of fun to go in and just kind of mess around with them. Well, after I got in there and they realized that they weren't going to be able to pull anything over my head because if you know the game, then you don't fall for anything. And at that point, they realized that they needed to give me something that was real. And this is the part that I want everybody in the world to hear. These guys actually said to me, "We had a young couple in here a while back. This young couple came in and told us that they could not afford to buy anything. But we got them to buy anyway, and we had clothes on them. So, now we have a deal for you." Well, instantaneously, I was furious. These kids went in telling them that they couldn't afford, they ran their scam anyway, and they destroyed these kids' credit rating. And the only reason that they fell for it is because they didn't know how the game was run. So, right then and there, I told them that I was going to go out and I was going to expose every political and every corporate con game that I could possibly find. And the reason that I'm coming in front of you is not because I think any one of you are running a con game, because in my opinion, not one of you and not one of you across the nation is running these con games knowingly. But the people at the highest offices are running these con games. And the only way our kids and anybody else can protect themselves is by knowing how that con game is run. Most of them are unbelievably simple, really simple. But at the same time, I will be coming back from time to time. You can accept what I say. You don't have to. But I don't have to, again, be upset because I didn't open my mouth and those kids wouldn't have lost their credit rating and possibly destroyed their entire life before they even got it started. Thank you so very much to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brownell. I don't think we have anybody else for public beheard. No? Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 10.01. This is a first reading of the Public Policy 5686, Use of Surveillance Cameras in the School District. Superintendent McLaren is going to give us a quick update before we discuss whether or not to waive the second reading.
So, this policy was actually put into effect when we first got cameras in the Middle High School, and then last year, we had cameras put in the elementary buildings using our Smart Schools bond money. But we came to realize that this policy had not been revised to accommodate that, and so by policy, our elementary principals did not have access to the recordings. So, we would like to simply modify the policy to include the elementary principals. And while I was looking at it, I noticed that the title Director of Athletics is not actually accurate as per our org chart. It actually should read the Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics. And so, those are the only modifications we're asking for, just so that our cameras can be utilized appropriately by all of our building administrators. And we're not changing any of the other aspects of this policy and how we utilize the cameras. We just want to make sure that the right people have access. So, we were hopeful that since the cameras are already in place and operational, that the board would contemplate waiving the first reading and adopting these changes because they are not substantive in terms of how the cameras are functioning.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaren. So, given that, I'm going to motion to waive the second reading of Policy 5686. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop. Does anybody have questions, comments about that? Okay, all in favor, please? That's unanimous. Thank you. And then we are going to make a motion to adopt Policy 5686. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop. Questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And then we're going to move on to item 10.02. We've looked at this before. We understand why the organizational chart needs to be redone. So, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of Policy 4212. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Go ahead, trustee story.
More of a question. Do we need to appoint the person before we restructure, change the ad chart?
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure the order matters as much because it's going to be 30 seconds between the two. We were kind of debating which way to do it, but because the org chart is a policy, we felt like keeping it with the policies just made more sense procedurally. But we also debated that same issue, but it's all within the same.
Let me have a second. I got a first, but I need a second. Trustee Bishop, okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Yeah, okay. Unanimous. Thank you. And last, at our last meeting, we went over Policy 1512. I'd like to make a motion, oh, I have to adopt this one? Yeah. All right. So, we're going to make a motion to adopt the Policy 4212. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop. Questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And then, second reading and adoption of Policy 1512, the public beheard statement, the motion to adopt Policy 1512.
I'd like to add or propose adding a few words to this where we say be civil. I think "end your main to education" or "end our school district" should be included in this, in the language to explicitly avoid any filibustering of the mic during the public beheard session.
Does anybody have, does anybody want to weigh in on trustee Wallace's? So, to be clear, what you're suggesting is that we add verbiage that suggests that public beheard comments be limited to only things that are relevant to education in general or the district in general. So, it wouldn't preclude questions regarding tax base or?
It would solely avoid someone who has a different agenda to utilize that session for not only commercial purposes, but for purposes that are totally and utterly unrelated to the work that we do and, I think, is a misuse of our treasure, our time.
I just want to be really careful with the idea of different agenda because I think that it's possible that that could be misheard as suggesting that the Board of Education has a uniform agenda which we don't.
I wouldn't mind clarifying. The use of the word agenda is confusing, and I apologize that. I try to be really careful with my words. But I think that the purpose of maybe changing slightly this, the wording of this, of the public beheard would be to avoid people who want to be heard, not about education, not about the business that we do, but who want to be heard.
I mean, I think that, I'd like to get some precedence on this because I do think that as elected officials, we do have an obligation to allow the public to come in and be heard regardless of whether it pertains or is germane to education or the school district. So, I think we need to get some clarity on that before we make a decision. We are all elected officials. So, I do think that, my understanding is that we do have an obligation to allow the public to come in and be heard. So, before, so I guess I would make a motion to table this, bring it back up at the next meeting, and get some clarity from attorneys. Trustee Story?
Yeah, I want the attorneys to look into this because we, people have the freedom of speech, so we can't infringe on that. So, this is something that definitely has to be looked in legally.
You know, I am all for freedom of speech. I wrote two books on censorship and believe that it's something that I really hold dear. But I also think that there's a point where, you know, the old saying where if, a judge once said, "I know obscenity when I see it," sort of, and there's a point where there is like the equivalent of a frivolous discussion that has nothing to do with the work that we do, be it about, you know, con men and that sort of thing. And I just question whether there's a way to be a little more clear in this to avoid us being manipulated.
Well, I think that clarity is always important, but I'm just not sure that this is something that we are actually allowed to do. So, before we go further with that, trustee story, did you?
Also, public beheard is up to the board. It is, does not have to be there, and we could remove it completely from the thing. It's up to the board to decide if we want public beheard to be here. It's up to the board to decide if we want public be heard to be here or not.
I really don't want it to be misconstrued that I want to in any way eliminate or change public be heard. I think it's such a valuable forum, and as the communications committee will talk about later, we believe it should be fostered. We'd love people to attend. We'd love people to talk here and communicate as much as they possibly can with the board. And that said, there, I think that just like commercial, we have an ability to curtail commercial content, I think that requesting maybe that the comments are germane to education is a fair change that should be considered.
Trustee Taylor?
I was going to agree that maybe the verbiage said request or encourage, that it pertains to the school district and the schools.
So what I guess what I would ask is trustee Wallace, if you could write up your suggestion, and we will send it to the board clerk. And Amanda, if you could please send it to the attorneys and see if they can weigh in. While we do not have to have public be heard, I think we're all in agreement that we want public be heard and that we want the public to, if anything, participate more. So given the assumption that we are going to continue with public be heard, are we allowed to suggest or modify in that way, or encourage people to talk about things that are only germane to education or to the Antioa School District? And if you could write that up, trustee Wallace, and send it to Amanda, that would be great. And then we can get some clarity. We'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting, and we can finalize this one way or the other, okay? I'm going to make a motion to table this discussion and to add it to the agenda in two weeks. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Taylor, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Item 10.04. I would remind everyone that we heard the corrective action plan at the last meeting, so the Board of Education hereby approves the corrective action plan for the school year ending June 30th, '22, as attached. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Wallace. Questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 10.05, Memorandum of Agreement Recognition Clause. The Antioa Board of Education approves the MOA between the Antioa Administrators Association and the Antioa Central School District regarding the recognition of titles. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Story. Questions or comments? I would just say congratulations to Amanda, to Ms. Allison, and to Ms. Grima, and I think we're so fortunate to have them both. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. All right. We've been waiting for this one. Item 10.06, let's talk about goals. You'll see that the board clerk has provided us with the goals that were sent to each, that two of our board members came up with. And I asked Amanda to please also provide the goal from 2018, which was really the last time that we had a super viable goal that wasn't COVID-focused. So I wanted to look at that as well. So we, if you take a look through your papers, you have that, as well as a suggestion from trustee Bishop, and a suggestion, and multiple suggestions from trustee Wallace. I think that this conversation about goals is one, you know, that obviously is had every year, and I would just ask, I think trustee Story is ready to go. She's done. She's done. I'm out. Thank you. I guess I, my suggestion would just be overall that it's, that we keep our goals measurable, achievable, that they should be goals that are community-focused, and that we are able to achieve the goals that we set forth. Because I don't think that there's anything more frustrating than setting goals and not being able to achieve them for a variety of reasons. And, you know, COVID has been such a focus for such a long time. And getting through the COVID years was, and supporting the administration for the last couple of years has really been, was the board goal for at least a year and a half. And then hiring a new superintendent was our goal last year, and I think we did a great job at that. And moving forward, how would you guys like to do this? Do you want me to read these out loud? Do we want to just talk about them? There have been two different suggestions made. Trustee Bishop suggested that we choose one goal, and that we focus on that, and she laid out groundwork that I'm sure you've all read as to why she felt that was the way to go. And trustee Wallace had come up with a couple of goals, probably some of which could be incorporated into the goal that trustee Bishop set forth. You know, there's a case to be made for both sides of this. But I'd like to, I'd like to start with trustee Bishop's suggestion first. Trustee Hemmingly Lynch?
Thank you. Just a clarifying question, because I liked the framework. I was just curious about the assignment, so to speak, is to discuss the goal for this year, yeah? So I'm concerned or confused about how we would then take forward the idea of a five-year plan. Is it, do we need to be specific, even if that's the direction we would like to go because I loved it? I just, I'm just curious, like, is the end goal, or the end result here to think about what that goal would be within a five-year potential plan for just one year?
Right, so I think the goal would be, would be the framework in setting the five-year plan. You know, so there's, if you look at the, at the 2018, 2019 board goal, I think that it does a fairly good job of kind of laying out what that would look like, and how we would develop and implement a long-term plan. So part of that would be, you know, how do we structure it? What do we have to do in order to accomplish having all of the collaborators on board? Where do we start? All of that would be encompassed within this goal. You know, so it's a lofty goal, but it's a really important one. Go ahead, trustee Story.
With their goals, what we've done in the past, we know it's, you're not going to be able to get completed in one year. There are goals that are long-term goals, that that's something that we would be working to. So it doesn't just have, you know, you said you're concerned about, you know, the working on a five-year plan in one year. It's going to take a long time to get to this, to this plan. It's, it could take a good year or more, but so, but these goals can continue on multi-years.
Trustee Taylor?
Looking at both goals, I can see us maybe doing both in a way, maybe not all of them completely. I do like the idea of Cindy's thing, having a five-year goal, because as we all get elected, maybe year to year, maybe it changes, we can't progress the district ahead if we keep changing a long-term goal, so everybody else has a different. So if we have that framework, maybe each new board member can, you know, have to work a little bit in that framework to make progress as a district. But then also some of, David's goals are more, I would like to see, you know, obviously mental health, a change right away, not in five years. You know what I mean? Like, maybe having a food program that is workable and financially sound, that we can help the children now as opposed to later.
I'm going to throw one goal out here because I have been all in favor forever for a long-term plan, goal, and we need one. But another thing that the district also needs to do is update its code of conduct. And that's a huge, long-time-consuming also one. So I think, and that one, I'd like us to look at that, because we also have to think the superintendent makes their goals upon the board's goals. So this is, we need to be working together with the superintendent so we don't have 20 million goals and not be able to complete anything. So the smaller goal, the least, the less goals, I think it'd be better for less goals because there's going to be a long-term, and there's a lot of projects that will have to be gone through, like if we go look for a five-year plan, you know, a long-term plan, how many committees we're going to have to go through and stuff like that. So it's going to be time-consuming, not only for the board, but for community and for administration, so to work together with that. But I also think our code of conduct needs to be reviewed because if I, I was on the code of conduct committee prior to becoming a board member, and that's over eight years ago, so we've had a lot of changes in it. So that's something that is also going to take at least a whole school year to do because you have to get the committee up and going, and monthly meetings and stuff like that, so.
I'm just curious if that's a board goal, if that would be a board goal, or if that is a district initiative?
I think it would be the board goal in conjunction with the superintendent's goals.
I think it does, it crosses both places, Cindy. I think, I'm sorry, trustee Bishop. The board does ultimately have to adopt the code of conduct, but I think the goal could be to have the administration, the superintendent, the administration work through revising the code of conduct, and, you know, we would obviously need to initialize the shared decision-making teams, and it's going to involve people at the district level, and then in each of the buildings. Because each, as you know, each level of our district may have different nuances. The same, the same rules are not going to apply, the same situations and rules that exist in the high school will not necessarily exist in all of the buildings.
You know, I think when I look at the 2018, 2019 board goals, I think it's really easy to see how trustee Wallace's, a number of trustee Wallace's goals could fit into this, particularly the mental health piece, and also the code of conduct. So in reading this, number two, "Support efforts to foster a more positive culture and climate within the district, including the exploration of a cultural, a culture and climate survey initiatives to increase school spirit, ongoing diversity education for students and staff, commitment to furthering restorative justice training and practices, and a sustained effort to better publicize the district's accomplishments and reach the community through social media." You know, certainly the wording could be changed to specifically include mental health, but I don't see how it excludes mental health. And it gives us, go ahead, trustee Bishop.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, in my opinion, you know, the district is doing a really good job of prioritizing students' mental health. You know, I mean, it's no fault of ours, or really even ASTER's, that we have not been able to staff the ASTER program. Over the last few years, we have hired an additional school psychologist and an additional school social worker in the district, so our mental health staffing has increased over the past, I believe, two years over anything that we've had in the past. So, I mean, I think that there are some things that are happening, oh my gosh, I just forgot one of the other ones, the restorative justice training is ongoing with Morningside Center for, I always forget the rest of that. Social Responsibility, and that's what they're doing. They're doing restorative justice and restorative circles in the building. So I think some of that is really happening.
I mean, I think I would also just say, though, that, that the mental health crisis is, is a significant one, and that while I think the district has done a phenomenal job of responding to it, I think we would all agree that getting in front of it is a little different than responding to it. So I, I'm comfortable leaving room in there for, you know, including mental health, the improvement of mental health amongst our students as part of the goal, but I definitely hear what you're saying. I think that, you know, that we've put a lot of money and energy into ensuring that we are able to be responsive to children's mental health needs, but I would love for us to figure out how to get better in front of it. Not that, you know, not that this isn't being discussed at every school district around the country, because it is, but...
And to be clear, some of the goals that I have proposed in, to at least discussion are in no way a criticism of the district or the superintendent and her cabinet whatsoever. So they are merely, and in some cases, you know, stating the goal, for instance, creating us, basically wanting our kids to flourish, and to talk about flourishing, we're doing a lot of wonderful work here in all of our buildings to have kids flourish. But also putting it front and center and making it clear that that's what we want in all of its manifestations of flourishing, I think is an important thing for us as a board to do.
Trustee Taylor?
With the goal of mental health, and I know kids meet individually with the counselors, and they are pulled out of the classes, and we also have meetings for the students during the school year for having different guest speakers. What about using one of those opportunities to have someone speak to coping skills to the general, you know, school population, not just individual groups? And just how, maybe meditation, how to interact with each other that doesn't involve social media, something as a group activity where they can, you know, learn to talk again, and not in emojis or abbreviated text messages, and how to actually not misconstrue what is being said over a text message, and how to interact with another human being again. And then my second thing is with the food insecurities, I don't know if we do this here, but in other districts, I know they, they have a collaboration with like a food pantry, and I've seen it in elementary schools where they have some kind of like book bag that doesn't look like it's food, but it, and then they go home for the weekend, or last week or whatever, and it has non-perishable things that last a long time, and then they can bring it home so that they know that they have something at home when they go. And then they just bring the bag back, and then they refill it, and it goes out again.
And there's a nonprofit called 67 Hours, I think, that, that may either fund that or help, and 67 Hours of Hunger, or something like that. It's a fantastic nonprofit that is popping up in different places to try and make that an easier process.
Yeah, it was something I was going to bring up later today, was just the conversation about food security in the district and kind of what I've been seeing, and some of the issues that have been coming up lately since school started again. So I think we can, we can talk more about that because it's definitely something that seems to be really a struggle. Go ahead.
And then what we talked about briefly one other time is the waste in the cafeteria, if for some reason, if it has to be thrown out because it's near a perishable deadline, or if the children don't actually want it, but they have to take it for their, to meet their payable food thing. Is there a way that before they actually take it and it's considered contaminated, that they can just put it to the side, and that it could be used for giving extras to the children that might need more?
I believe our food services director said they do try and do that as much as they can, but at the end of each meal period, then they dispose of it.
Do you think that Ms. Downs would be willing to come in and have this conversation with us a little bit and do some brainstorming? Because I think that there are members of the board who haven't met Ms. Downs, and...
Oh, I'm sure she would love to come and speak to the board and talk about all of the things that she does.
Yeah, she has a phenomenal program, and I think it would help us all to kind of understand what's already being done, and then look for ways to support her in expanding, if there, if there is room for expansion in there at all. Because she, she works really incredibly hard for the district and does a great job, so I'd love for her to meet everybody.
Absolutely. I will invite her, and her passion is feeding our children. That is her, that is her absolute passion.
She's terrific. Did you want to add something to the goals?
I did just want to advocate for having a goal for the long-term plan. The board has tried to get this going for a few years, as we can see, and we did start to get somewhere, and then COVID kind of interrupted everything, but the further along we get, you know, we are really struck by the lack of applicants for positions, the difficulty we are finding in staffing all of our buildings and transporting our students. And, you know, when you look at, over the course of time, I can, I can look back and get the exact numbers, but I think that since we closed West Hurley... exact numbers, but I think that since we closed West Hurley in 2004, we have lost almost a thousand students and not changed our footprint. I think that there are opportunities to better the educational opportunities, the extracurricular opportunities, so many things for kids that we are missing because we are constantly trying to cover all of the real estate that we have. And I think it just, in the end, maybe after we look at it, we're going to say this is the best situation we have, but I think it really needs to be analyzed and looked at from all different perspectives. And I understand that there are community perspectives related to each building, there are a lot of other perspectives to look at it from, though, and I would really like to be able to do that work, because it's, this is a very unique district, and in a lot of ways, that's a wonderful thing, and in a lot of ways, it can be difficult to manage and keep everything operational.
I mean, to Superintendent McLaren's point, I think that, I think that picking up this goal is extremely important, and I think we've all kind of discussed it a little bit and understand the need for it. Trustee Lynch, did you want to add something? It seemed like your hand was up before now. Okay. Okay. I guess what I would suggest is unless somebody else is willing to do it, I would be happy to kind of write a goal that will have multiple parts to it, that focuses on the development of a long-term district-wide plan to get us going, that we can take a look at for the next meeting. I will disseminate it to everyone, and I will ask you to make any input, but we will not discuss it until we are in public. Does anybody else want to do it rather than me? Okay, all right, so I'm going to work on that before our next meeting.
I can work with you if you want.
Terrific, yeah, I would appreciate that, thank you.
From, number one, from the 1819 is well-written.
It is very, well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think that, I think number one is really well-written. I think that number two, we could tweak a little bit to include some of Trustee Wallace's goals, and, you know, I understand, I need to look and see where we're at with four, I don't know that we want to continue having this conversation about the board's homework policy, so I would probably leave that out, but, yeah, I don't know that we need to get crazy with that.
Can we also just briefly just mention DEI as a, you know, I think something that we should highlight or try to promote in this district?
For the record, can you?
Diversity, Equity, Inclusion.
I think that actually is in this goal.
It's mentioned.
Yeah, ongoing diversity education for students and staff. I mean, I will certainly expound on this a little bit, and then everyone will have the opportunity to kind of look at it and make suggestions after Trustee Taylor and I take a look at it together. I'll get it to everybody in time before the next meeting so that y'all can weigh in on the way that we kind of put it together and word things. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, one comment I just wanted to make sure I added was that I also just want us to be thoughtful about, you know, obviously with the last two years and where we've come, and really think a lot about what Trustee Wallace said about, you know, really focusing on having the students flourish again. And I think, you know, we see the excitement with parents coming back to the buildings, all of this great momentum is something that we should capture in this goal, but at the same time, be quite realistic about just what it takes to return to normal and to get student achievement scores back up, right? And to think about ways in which all of us have, are struggling to find normal again and be realistic about that and to bring some of that humility into this process, because I think, as we were just talking about, all of these initiatives will require a lot of work of our teachers and our administrators, and I think we really need to make sure that we're not asking too much this year. I'm excited about a five-year or 10-year vision or plan, but I think in terms of having really smart goals, which is an acronym that I use quite a bit, but for those who don't know, it's, you know, meant to be really specific and measurable and attainable, right? Realistic and time-bound, I think that's really important, and particularly when we're asking a lot of teachers who, whose first goal, of course, for themselves is to see those students flourish, and I'm grateful for that, and I just want to make sure that we don't undo any of that good progress we've seen in the first month of school being back in session.
I'm sorry, I can totally be empathetic and sympathetic to that, and it's not going to happen tomorrow, like any of these changes, but I don't want our district to get stagnant and actually be more harmful to everybody because we're not progressing and moving forward and preserving the district, because we can't, we can't maintain what we're doing now, I don't think, so, as a personal preference, but I think we need to just talk about it and it might be some hard decisions, no, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy, but I think we need to at least discuss where we can move forward.
Thank you, yeah, I would almost say that, that a well-laid-out goal would actually encompass both of what you're saying, but would also acknowledge that the way that we're moving forward now is making the lives of our teachers and our administrators harder, that until we really set forward a strong plan and start to work towards making some of the changes that are really necessary in this district, that we're asking people to work harder, not smarter. So if we do our jobs well, then moving forward, we're going to give everybody some hope, because getting this district kind of configured appropriately and making the changes that we may talk about making at some point are going to help the district move forward in a really positive way, I think. And I want to just really be super clear that we're not talking about making changes yet. We're talking about doing the legwork and the groundwork that has to be done so that we understand what the best changes are for the district. We have no idea. Until we do this work and until we set forward the goal and until we enact a plan, we have no idea what those changes are. So that would be my goal in working with Trustee Taylor on writing this goal and then talking about it at the next meeting and the interim, sending it to everyone, so you guys can weigh in and see if you're comfortable with the wording and how we're moving forward, and then we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting. Does that sound good, everybody? Yeah? Okay. Oh, our next fun topic, the creation of a board newsletter. So I've heard from a couple of members of the community, I won't name former President Salem, but former board trustee President Kevin Salem is quite perturbed that we have not yet created this board newsletter, and I understand why. He would like us to get cracking on this. I think that, for me, I'd like to understand the goal. We agreed to this last year, we agreed that we're setting a board newsletter. I think that this board needs to kind of get that done, but also just to decide what that's going to look like, how we're going to disseminate it, who's going to write it, and, you know, what the goal is for the first newsletter. Trustee Lynch?
Sorry. Thank you, Trustee Sherry. The communications committee has also been thinking a lot about this, and so I wondered if I could just give you an update as to what our current proposal is, and then happy to have input and...
Yeah, that would be great.
Other ideas. So the thought was that, for those who don't know, the superintendent often produces an update of what goes on at the board meetings, and it's a monthly and sometimes even more regular update to all the contacts within the district. We'd love to utilize the content of those monthly updates and roll them up into a quarterly report. The thought was that the committee could draft that report quarterly, we could commit to that, and we would ask for copy editing support from our colleagues at the BOCES PR team, the BOCES PR team that we've been working with. And then we would also like to include an annual insert in the printed quarterly newsletter that BOCES produces. So this would be a, another way to, to reach members of the district, community members in the district, and better understand, you know, again, what the board has been up to, but also what we'd love to make sure, the idea of the annual insert might also help articulate the board goal, right? And then make sure that the content about what we've been up to is in service to these goals, so people sort of understand both the work that we're doing and the role that we play, which has been, you know, an ongoing goal of the communications committee. The other thought is that we could include a calendar of meetings in encouraging more people to join us, and also give people information about how they too can also run for board each year, the date and the process and what it would require. Again, the content could then be supporting our overarching goals around communications with the community, what our goals are for the district, and, you know, the operations, how we operate within the district.
Can I just add that?
Please.
So one would be a print version, two-page, and also be a PDF on our website, and then four times a year, we'd also do a digital version, sort of an update, cluing in people to what we're up to and who we are.
Jesse Taylor?
Yeah, could I actually, like, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, that sounds good, but is there a way to simplify it and whittle it down to something that's more like bullet points that maybe comes out, like maybe monthly, just to go home and kind of simplify it to what the parents actually need, like right now, to better communication, to take away the air of like any kind of hidden, anything that, you know, was going on, and just, even if it's just a reiteration of what happens at the board meetings, but as, you know, like the two board meetings together as a monthly, just so that they're updated frequently on that and maybe bring it down so that it's simplified so that the general public can actually read it, so there's not any overreaching vocabulary or any kind of like, you know, definitions, anything like that. So it's simple, that anybody in the public can read, even if like, you know, my, you know, a junior high kid picks it up, but they can also read it and understand it.
That's definitely the intent. Trustee Taylor, I think, but what I heard you say is more often, yeah, the frequency maybe should be more monthly versus quarterly.
Yeah, even if you do like a bigger quarterly report or, you know, something like that, but a monthly simplified form, just bullet points, just like a, so they know exactly, because not everybody goes on YouTube, or they might not have access to YouTube to watch the meetings, and to be honest, watching the meetings, it's a little draggy, you know what I mean? As an outside person, I wouldn't really want to watch it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Trustee Taylor, this is scintillating.
I personally have wanted to fast-forward sometimes at home, so I'm just saying, like, simplified, one-page sheet, nothing really over the top, just so they can give you the highlights.
Trustee Story?
The other thing we have to think about is that, how are we sending them out? Because we also have to, not just parents in our buildings need it, our community members. So how are we getting stuff to our community members? You know, we do the newsletter quarterly, four times a year, so that's something that's already, we're paying for already, so putting a page in that would not be, you know, more thing, but how are we getting all this stuff and what's the cost of it to, because it's not only parents, it's all community members. So if we are thinking of doing it weekly or monthly, that's, you know, a cost that's going to be added on, added up.
Right, no, to be clear, we would be utilizing the quarterly newsletter that already goes out in print, but then to communicate to the community, we would have to be using the website. The website is where we really want to drive more people anyway, so the idea is that we would be telling people and driving people to the website.
We also need to have hard copies for people that do not have the internet. That's also something, we can't just say, we're only going to put this on the website if we want all of our community members to have this knowledge.
Trustee Bishop?
Yeah, I think, we just met this morning, and so this is kind of fresh in our memory. You know, we did talk about doing monthly communications, but it's a lot of work, so we were hoping to pare it down to quarterly, and those quarterly updates would really be focused on what we're doing as a school board, you know, our collaboration with superintendent and, you know, decision-making, that kind of thing, and we thought that those would be either on the website or on Facebook, you know, so it would be, they would be done digitally. But then the, once a year, there would be an insert in one of the printed newsletters that are sent home, that would have more detailed information, that would be describing, you know, the processes that we use, how to run for school board if you'd like to, you know, a little bit more sometimes about us as individuals, that sort of thing.
Superintendent?
I was just thinking also in terms of outreach to the community, just in remembering that we have meetings set up with the town supervisors, maybe when the quarterly updates are done from the board, the district clerk could potentially send them to each of the town governments and share them with them, and so we could also do community outreach that way. So even, you know, when we post on our Facebook and our website, it's usually people who are part of our school community. So if we do a little bit of additional outreach to the towns, they might also, it might garner a little more interest.
Just as a thought, based on Trustee Taylor's comment and good idea, what if we also took a spread in, once a year at least, in the Freeman or One Pager in the Freeman, or another newspaper, you know, or even a free community paper, like, you know, if there's one that, well, that might be cheaper, that actually do a print product that's in the community itself and being distributed for free?
Okay, so what I hear Trustee Taylor saying that I think is important to not lose track of is, is that we have an obligation to share with the community at whole, you know, the community at large, which is Trustee Story's point, that we can't just focus on our students and their parents. But I hear Trustee Taylor saying that she thinks it needs to happen more frequently, and honestly, I think, I think there's a real point to that. I don't, I want to be really careful that we're not inundating people, but I do think that we could certainly start with something that, you know, just kind of says who we are, what we're doing that's different this year, that we completed the communication survey, because I think that that's important to acknowledge, especially for the people who did it, and start with something, and then tell people where they're going to find the information from us. So here's a one-sheeter, this is who we are, this is what we're doing, this is when you're going to hear from us, and you can expect to see an update from the Board of Education, you know, quarterly in these places and yearly in the BOCES flyer that everybody in the community gets in their mailbox. So that might be a way to kind of address what Trustee Taylor is saying, but also to not inundate the community. But I think to Superintendent McLaren's point, there's got to be a way that we can reach the community as a whole that does not involve the internet. I don't know that it's Hudson Valley One anymore because I'm not sure what they're doing with print, but if they are still doing print in that way, I would certainly speak to them about using them, because I think that they are kind of our community's main source of news. But, you know, I think we should brainstorm on it a little bit, because there needs to be a way, whether it's posting it in the libraries or looking for some community boards, a number of our communities actually have, through their libraries, access to a lot of people. I know Phoenisha does, I know Woodstock does, I know Olive does, you know, so I think there's really a way to use our community libraries to spread some information to the public at large.
I just think that 12 standalone publications, even with bullet points, to produce a print version of it and distribute could be a lot.
That's not what I'm saying, yeah, that's not, I'm suggesting that we start with one that directs people as to... one that directs people as to where this information is going to be, acknowledges some of the roadblocks that we've had in the past, acknowledges a community survey, and says, "Here's where you're going to find us and when", um, just to kind of get the ball rolling, you know, and then they know to look in the, let's say we go with the budget handout, um, because that's probably the most well-read. So if we include our, you know, annual board update in the budget, BOSI's budget mailer that goes out, everyone in the community gets that, but we can start by letting people know where to find us. I think that's really important. Trustee Story.
Why don't we use the BOSI's quarterly report when we do our board, you know, newsletter? It be included in the BOSI's mailer that we do four times a year instead of having a separate one?
Right, I don't think we're talking about a separate one.
We're not talking about, we're talking about taking two pages, um, of that BOSI's produced, uh, mailer and, one time a year, and laying out the goals, who we are with BIOS, as well as, you know, some really important information about board responsibilities, our limitations, which I don't think always can, can be, uh, communicated.
What I mean is that we use that, the four times a year, we use that where we put it out to the community, the one-page, instead of using separate things. The board have a page in our BOSI's quarterly newsletter, and that's where we, where we send out the information.
Okay, so, Trustee Story, you're suggesting that instead of once a year, that we do it four times a year. Um, what I'm also suggesting is that we, we do send out a one-sheeter probably through our libraries to let people know that that's going to happen, um, and, you know, obviously on the website and, and the places where people will normally look. Um, I, I guess my concern with four times a year is workload. Who's going to write the newsletter? Who's going to kind of design it? Uh, who's going to create the content for it? Are we going to approve it in a timely manner? Are we all going to check our emails and, and get back to one another about how this is going to get done? Because I, I think that's a really important piece of it, is like, we can all agree that this should happen four times a year, but then it needs to happen. I, I don't want to make empty promises to the community, so if we're going to do this, if we're going to say four times a year, I don't think that it can fall just on the Communications Committee, um, because that's a lot of work. So I would love for it to happen four times a year, and I'm happy to help work on it, but I need to make sure that all of my colleagues feel the same way.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. Um, I think that we could probably get some help from BOSI's even if it means maybe having, I mean, there's no such thing as one page, it's always going to be probably two, um, in terms of, if you're adding, uh, a page, it's, you know, paper-wise, it works out probably to two, um, but, um, you know, we could certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, but we could see if we can budget the potential of add, either eliminating, uh, a page that exists, you know, and, and, or adding a page or two.
Uh, we can certainly, uh, talk to BOSI's about how to manage that. I think a page of our newsletter is fairly substantial. Um, I think two pages is a lot, if you're, if you're looking to create two pages worth of content, that's really a lot.
Uh, photos are beautiful.
Okay, I love, I'm, I'm, I'm very fond of you all, but I don't want to pay to put photos in the newsletter that's going to go to every household.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't think the community would, would really care to see pictures of us over pictures of their children and grandchildren.
Okay, so, um, I would like to ask everyone to think about what their level of commitment is to getting this done. If, um, you know, if there are seven of us who are willing to work on this, then I think that quarterly is fine. Um, if there are not, then I, I don't think it is. Um, I, I really, I feel pretty strongly about not putting this entire workload on the Communications Committee, because they are already doing, um, probably a heavier workload than most of the other committees, except for potentially Trustee Story's committee. Um, so I, I'd like to think about it, I'd like to add it for a final conversation on our next meeting, um, but I also would like to move pretty quickly on, on being able to, as soon as we make that decision, getting the one-sheeter out that kind of says where we're at and when to expect it, as soon as we make this decision.
And one thing we can just add is, um, Superintendent McLaren shared with us that she actually has a meeting this week with BOSI's, so we could maybe just come back with more detail about what is the editorial calendar, how much time do they need and all of that stuff, so that we can have a more informed conversation about the commitment of four versus one.
That would be great, yeah. How much content would they need and, you know, and when would they need it by? Um, and is it realistic for them to include us? And can it be one-sheet? I think, um, would be great to know from them. And then we can plan to make a decision, if everybody could kind of think about their ability to make a commitment to this prior to our next meeting, so that at the next meeting, we can make a decision as to whether it's four times a year or once a year, um, and if it's once a year, then I'd say, you know, some regular updates on the website are appropriate as well, um, but I, I would like everybody to kind of think about their commitment level and, and making sure that, that we can all take this on, um, because I don't want to ask three people to do it when there are seven of us, okay? Sound good? All right, so Amanda, we're going to add that to the next discussion for a final decision and to, um, to make a, a calendar at that point, and Superintendent McLaren, if you could ask BOSI's some questions.
I keep sending them emails.
Thank you.
This is where it's at with this, oh, and this, everything's in this.
Thank you. Okay, um, hey, Amanda, give us a five-minute break. Item 12.01, Consent Agenda. The board, the board hereby approves item numbers 12.02 to 12.05. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Wallace. Questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, wait, Trustee Schedule U. What month is this?
It's me. Yes, everything seems to be in order, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lynch. Okay. Um, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 13.01, ICRs were hereby approved, item number 3.13.02. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop. Comments or questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, Committee Reports. Audit Committee?
The Audit Committee hasn't met since the last meeting when we had our external audit report.
Thank you for, thank you guys for doing that, that was, uh, quite the undertaking. Facilities Committee, Trustee Story.
Uh, yes, we met September 15th, uh, at, back at Woodstock. We're going over some of our different designs of what we're doing and, and getting back bids and finding out that they're too much. The bids have come in too much. So we have to go back and try to figure out where the money's coming from and what was put into each account, because if the board remembers, um, we have certain projects that are getting done by the ESSA, the different CARES Act money that we got, and certain monies have to be spent by certain days, by certain time periods, um, that I actually had a thought about afterwards, that I'd like the board to start writing our legislators and finding out if there will be some kind of extension in using the money, because all of, um, one thing we found out was that it's going to be 52 weeks to get air, air, our air handling units. So projects that we were planning on doing in the summer coming up, we can no longer do, because it is taking 52 weeks to get the products. So this is some of the things that the Facilities, uh, the Facilities Committee is running into is that we've got money, we want to spend it, but we may run out of time, so we need to, you know, the, the federal government is, is saying when we have to spend this money, so I thought that the board, as a whole, as we've done in the past, has contacted our, our legislators and speak with this to see if they have any insight of when this is going on, because it doesn't just affect school districts, this affects everybody that gets, that has gotten this CARES money act, like hospitals and stuff like that. So everybody's going out to do construction projects, and we can't get the, the equipment or we can't get people to do it, bid on it, so there's a very long, lengthy process that we're going through, and it's not just us to do it.
Trustee Story, are you asking us to write our legislators to ask for, um, I guess, uh, permission to not be, not spend the money by the due dates?
Well, ex, uh, to find out if there's an extension, what the federal government is going to do with this. with this, to start going to our elected officials saying, "We need help here. We can't get our equipment because it's taking so long." What is the federal government going to do because of this? It's not just us. It's, like I said, it's not just schools. It's anybody that got the ESA or what's the other one?
So it's like the supply chain debacle is kind of holding all of the work up, but our time period could run out so that we weren't, okay, got it.
Yeah. That, you know, something that, yeah, the Legislative Action Committee could take on and, you know, start going from there. But that's for, that, so our, you know, air handling units, we didn't do any major construction projects over this summer because we couldn't get the approvals and whatnot. We thought we had everything in place and bid it so we could get our stuff done for the summer coming up. However, finding out that it's taking a year to get our hand handling, air handling units, which will put, push the projects back another year.
And it's very possible that there may be written into the CARES Act, you know, some sort of appeal process. But the newly elected Congressman, Pat Ryan, probably has a constituent services associate who can probably streamline that information.
Anything else from you, trustee Story? Well, I want to thank you for the excellent work that was done repaving the student parking lot driveway because I really thought I was going to lose part of my car last year. And at least on multiple occasions, like at least five times where I was like, oh God, I'm not going to make it home. So that looks beautiful. And I thank you for all of your hard work on the Facilities Committee. Policy Committee? Trustee Bishop, trustee Armando, trustee Hemingway Lynch?
I think we just approved or discussed the policies that we discussed last time we met, which was recently, but I can't remember the date. So no news, right, from policy?
Did Communications Committee have anything else to report other than?
Sure, just briefly. In addition to the newsletter, we also were able to see the new family packet that's been produced by Superintendent McLaren and her team, which is great. It's done and it's now just being translated. So this is a packet of information that will go to new families, including obviously all kindergarten families, but also any new registrants to the district. And gives them a sense of both, you know, what to do if they have a complaint or concern. Would it go to buy some information about the vision and mission of the school, and lots of other important information that we think all families should have when coming to the district. And we also discussed reviewing the Board Community Communications Policy Number 2130. We took a look at it and discussed the idea of asking the Policy Committee to review it with some updates from the sample that BOSI shared with us last month, and other ways that we can ensure that this goal that this committee has around, you know, increasing transparency and two-way communication can be lived into. So we will review that and take that to the Policy Committee and bring it to the full board if there's an opportunity to update that policy.
The Legislative, go ahead trustee Story.
The question for the Policy Committee, in years past, part of the Policy Committee, they would take a section of the policies and review it. Is that something that's happening currently, like every Policy Committee that a bunch of them are?
We still have the analysis done by NISBA several years ago that we're working our way through. Yep.
Legislative Action Committee has not met yet, but it sounds like we have something to meet about. And so I'm happy to get that going. Trustee Hemingway Lynch is out of town for a little bit, and when you get back, let's plan to get together. And I'd like to work on that, but also to work towards supporting Superintendent McLaren's goal for increased cell phone and Wi-Fi coverage for our district. So I think that those are two good places for us to start. Okay, any old business? Does the Board have any old business? No? New business? Trustee Lynch?
Sorry, this, I'm too slow to, on the old business side. But I'm glad you mentioned it because I was actually just asked about the work around trying to enable Wi-Fi around the Phoenisha schools. Many know there's no Wi-Fi access in that part of Shandakin, but just wondering if there's a way to enable the Wi-Fi at the school for safety reasons. A lot of events are happening, obviously, around the school grounds, and there's no way to communicate with parents who are, you know, late to pick up their kid, for example, and that kind of thing. I wanted to thank Superintendent McLaren for getting an emergency phone installed outside the school so anybody could use it for an emergency. But we're thinking more about just to enable communications between families. And wondered if that is for the Legislative Committee to take up, or if there's an update on that. Thank you.
So I had asked our Director of Technology to work on both that and the 911 box outside the building. And then I did check in with him about three weeks ago about the Wi-Fi, just to see if he had had time to work on it over the summer. And at that point, he had let me know that it was in testing, but they were having Wi-Fi calling issues with it. So I'll check back in with him, but that's definitely in process. Yep.
New business? Anybody? Trustee Taylor?
I was curious. It kind of, I guess, goes along with the thinking about the goals, the long-term goals. But there's a parcel of land, I guess, that butts up against the school that is for sale. I don't know anything about the land. I don't know if, what it's zoned for or anything like that. But I don't know if...
Which school?
The main campus. The main campus. And if that would help us with a long-term goal if we acquired that land. I don't know, I know it butts right up against our property here. I'm not sure which side.
I believe it's out past the bus garage, kind of up the road a little bit. I forget...
Upper Greensville Road.
So that was brought up. Our Director of Facilities also noticed that and brought it up in Facilities Committee. But in order to contemplate purchasing property, that needs to be voter approved. Voter approved?
Just, do we know the asking price, just for interest?
We do, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
How many acres?
We saw the listing, but we can't commit anything unless it's voter approved.
How many acres?
So how do we go about even doing any of that? Like, what's the next step?
I think it's a long-term plan.
Yeah, I think it certainly folds into the long-term plan, but it would need to be brought to the voters, probably with the budget.
Assuming it's still for sale.
Do you know how large the parcel is?
I, we, I saw something. I don't, off the top of my head, remember.
I can, I can get the information from Kyle and then have Amanda share it with you guys.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it seems realistic and it fits with our long-term plan, you know, then that's something that we would approach the voters with, with all of the other things that we're going to approach them with this spring. And, you know, which doesn't preclude us from having a conversation with the owner of the property, or having attorneys have conversations with the owner of the property. I assume that they thought that we might be interested in buying it when they put it up for sale. So, you know, if, if after we create our long-term plan, if expanding the bus garage is part of that conversation, then we may very well want to have a conversation with that landowner and see if we can get it on the budget vote. Trustee Story? No? Okay. Anybody else, new business? Trustee Bishop?
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, let the, all the Board trustees know that for the purpose of traveling to committee meetings, agenda setting meetings, trustee visits to school buildings, or BOSI's programs, or, you know, wherever we're invited to go, Ulster County School Board Association meetings, and other authorized travel, like to conferences and things like that, we are able to submit for mileage reimbursement. And also, and I don't, I don't have any idea, you know, what the, the numbers are at this time. And I don't know what the meal expenses are, but I believe we also get meal expense reimbursement too, if we're away for like an overnight or something.
Yeah, for conferences, the Board gets reimbursed for what we, what we pay for. We have to pay for it first. We have to make, you have to make sure you get an itemized list, an itemized receipt. Otherwise, you will not be reimbursed because our auditors will get flagged for it. It'll get kicked back, but...
I think I just found the property. No, it doesn't have a house. It has a shed, but it's, it's set up for a property, it's set up to have a house built. It is right now considered vacant land. It has a 16 by 24 foot garage and/or studio workshop. Two acres? Oh, thank you. And it is $189,000.
So I don't know, like, if we have to, I would hope that we would pursue that, whatever the next step would be, to look into it.
Superintendent McLaren, what would be your preferred method of next step on the, I don't know that the district has a real estate agent that we work with.
I think the next step is to speak to the attorney and find out, really, I've not been involved in a purchase of property. I've tried to sell.
We're still trying to sell property.
Have not been successful yet, so...
Maybe they want to trade. We have a school in Worcester.
So I think, I think our next step would be to ask the attorney how to proceed.
Okay, would you, would you mind doing that?
No, that's fine. We will do that.
Thank you very much. I don't think it has to be an RFI. So the only new business I have is that I wanted to just bring up the backpack initiative that I'm seeing kind of pop up all around the country. And, you know, wearing one of my other hats, working with the table, I'm, I'm finding a tremendous need for prepared food in the community. Less so, you know, what food pantries provide, but, but more so things that children can access kind of on their own. Pre-made sandwiches, you know, fresh fruit, snacks seem to really be an issue. I think that, I think that the change towards no longer being able to give free lunch to all of our students has had an impact on families, particularly with inflation, food rates, food inflation as high as they are. So I'm seeing more and more families asking for our help at the table. And unfortunately, we're kind of at capacity right now, providing over 150 meals a week all around, only within the Anture School District. So I thought that the backpack program was an interesting one. Yeah, it smells like weed in here. Yeah, why? It's either a skunk or New York State legalization. Let's hope it's a skunk. Okay. So something I would just like to talk about, and I think would be a great part of the conversation with Ms. Downs.
I actually included that in my email invitation to her. Our meeting on October 25th is actually here at the middle high school campus. And I remember that a few years ago, when she came to the board meeting here, she handed out as a way of letting the board know what kinds of things she's offering. She actually brought samples of some of the food that she made. So I thought if we did it in the, at the meeting while we were at the high school, it would be easier for her to do that. And I did remind her that she had done that in the past, just in case she felt like she'd like to do that.
We like snacks. Snacks are great for these nine o'clock dinner meetings.
I think there's going to be a lot of Fig Newtons probably that we're going to want, based on the smell.
Is that your go-to, David? Fig Newtons? That's not mine. Okay, anybody else, new business? No? Okay. Anybody have an RFI for Superintendent McLaren? Request for information? Trustee Story?
I'd like to know what the middle school, high school plan is for circles this year. When are they scheduled? What grades? When, what, where, why? Thank you.
And I have an RFI that came to me through a community member who wanted to better understand our practice of, of having the children take breathalyzer tests prior to the school dance on Friday night. The community member wanted to understand if they had signed something that allowed for that. And if not, what is our policy on the breathalyzer tests? And what happens if a child does have a positive breathalyzer test? What is the next step? And how do we reach their parents, et cetera? So if you wouldn't mind updating us about that, that would be great. Anybody else? No? Wow. Let's see. Motion to adjourn this meeting. Trustee Story, it is 8:44. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Story. And trustee Bishop, comments? All in favor? Thank you, guys. Amanda, I need a pen that's not purple if you want me to sign this stuff.